2019. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commissioner Murphy.
Will you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present.
I'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes from September 23rd.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Everybody want to vote, please?
Oh, wait, what did I do? No. Yes.
All right.
Did I mess that up?
Votes are done. It's approved five zip. The next public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comment session should fill out a request to speak. We have one for the second item on our agenda. Do we have anything else, anyone else? Consent calendar, we have nothing on the consent calendar. Public hearing, Agenda Item Number Two. Coastal Development Permit, CDP 190012, to allow an addition and remodel to a legal nonconforming house on a coastal bluff lot located in the RSF III zoning designation at 34821 Doheny Place. We have a staff report?
Good evening, Chair Donor. Planning Commissioner is John Champin, the case planner for the Bill Seens residence. I stated as a request for a coastal development permit. The project site is located in the RSF III zoning designation. It is in a, currently, it is an existing 3,455 square foot, two-story, single-family dwelling with an attached two-car garage on a coastal bluff lot within the Capo Beach community in Dana Point. Just to give you a little background on the property, it was constructed in 1954. It is legal nonconforming because it was constructed prior to the current development standards and has a legal nonconforming coastal bluff and side yard setbacks and has a substandard interior dimension for the garage. This is the existing nondescript architectural style of the building. You know, there's some resemblances to the 1950s when it was constructed, as you can see on the rear elevation, however, there have been some facade improvements that have occurred over time. Project scope would include the remodel and expansion of the two-story house. On the basement level, it will include a 66 square foot addition for the new stair access to that lower level and remodel the bathroom and bedroom for the master, which is on that floor. On the first floor, it would include a 95 square foot addition for the new entry hall. It would remodel the bedrooms, bathrooms, kitchen, and office on the level and, in addition to that, a 44 square foot addition to the garage. Project would also include increasing the roof height to 28 feet, which would be eliminating the mansard roof around the exterior facade of the structure. And if approved, the project would expand the house to 3,600 square foot feet and the garage to 491 square feet. This is the proposed site plan. As you can see, in red is the bluff edge and then the 25-foot setback. So a portion of the structure located on the seaward side. In between the bluff setback line and the bluff edge is an existing portion of the structure, however, that is not proposed to be expanded and there would be no new footings within that area. None of the nonconformities associated with project would be expanding and all of the proposed additions would be within the required setbacks for the lot. As you can see here, this is the basement or lower level of the structure. All of the proposed improvements would be landward of the 25-foot bluff setback and the addition would be just for the access stairs down to that lower level, which would comply with all the necessary setbacks. So this would not require any new foundations within the bluff setback. This is the first floor, which, as you can see, the additions are located on either side of the garage there, the larger of the two being for the front entry and then a small portion for the, in addition to the garage. On the rear side of the structure, it does have two new decks that would be located off the back, however, those would be located out of the 25-foot bluff setback as well as the proposed patio cover, which would also be located out of the setback. So no new foundations would be required within this 25-foot bluff setback. This is the proposed rendering of the structure. As described by the architect, it would be Asian contemporary. It would be eliminating the mansard roof that currently exists around the majority of the structure and would be replacing it with a six-and-12 pitched roof along with some new stucco siding and stone veneer along the front. Proposed project requires a coastal development permit because of the proposed new decks and patio cover within 50 feet of the bluff edge as well as the increased roof, increased volume due to the new roof design for the structure. In regard to the coastal development permit, the project site is located 400 feet from the nearest public access, which would be adjacent to and leading to the Doheny State Beach and the Capistrano Beach area located at the intersection of Pacific Coast Highway and Palisades Drive. There would be no impact to public recreation or coastal access, given that the site is already developed and there is public access nearby the site. Project complies with all the necessary findings for the coastal development permit, given that it is in compliance with the city's certified local coastal program as well as the Coastal Act and complies with all the necessary findings for the coastal development permit. Staff is recommending approval of the coastal development permit, subject to the attached findings and conditions of approval provided in your packet. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions that you may have.
Questions for staff? Jonathan, on the item that says minor site development permit is not required because it complies with all the required setbacks and is less than 10% of the existing structures, but on the summary page, it says the 14-foot. So although it's, it does meet the geological requirement, but it does not, it is not compliant with the standard, right?
Correct. That 14-foot dimension is from the master bedroom on the lower floor. That's existing, not proposed to be expanded in any form. Those proposed additions are located within all the necessary setbacks and, given that they are less than 10% of the structure's square footage, gross square footage, it does not require a site development permit or a minor site development permit.
All right. No other, no comments? Then I'll open it up to the public. Any comments from the public?
Yes, there is one.
Rob Williams?
Studio Six Architects. I'm just here representing the client. You guys have any questions?
Thank you. All right, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners discussion?
I think this is a thoughtful project. I think it'll really be an improvement to the existing structure that's out there right now, make it a lot more functional for the applicant, and it'll be a lot more visually appealing for any passersby. I'm pleased that it complies with all of the required setbacks and I find that it's in conformance with the zoning code. I'll be supportive of the project.
Thank you.
Yes, I think it's a great, it's a great project. Walking along Doheny Place, along the street there and looking out toward the ocean, it looks like that all the houses on the ocean side, on the water side, are just one story. That's at least from the vision that I see when I'm walking, it's just one story. And it seems like all of those along the bluff there, not the houses across the street, are one story to start with and then they, do they just sort of flow down the hill into another story? I'm just trying to visualize.
Yeah, from the properties that I've experienced down there, it does appear to be the case, especially with the property immediately adjacent to it to the north, it just was remodeled and it does have a resemblance of a one-story from the front, however, it does taper down to two stories along the rear as well. So I think that that is somewhat typical to the homes along Doheny Place.
Good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I echo the comments of my fellow commissioners, Mr. McCann. I believe this project fits well in the neighborhood. I'm not making any changes to the land form. It's consistent with our zoning code and, you know, it's a building, I think it was built in, you said 54? So, and it looks all but like it was built in 54. It's tired, it needs to be fixed, and what's been proposed is a wonderful, I think it looks great. So I'm in full support for those reasons and I'll offer a motion if nobody else does.
I'll entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve coastal. Words right? Coastal Development Permit, CDP 19-0012, to allow an addition and remodel to a legal nonconforming house on a coastal bluff located in the RSF III zoning designation at 34821 Doheny Place.
Second. All in favor? Five oh, congratulations. The next item on our agenda is the signage program permit, SPP 190002, for the Dana Point Plaza located at 34119 South Pacific Coast Highway. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Planning Commissioner Sean Nicholas, project planner. This is the sign program permit for a master sign program at the Dana Point Plaza there, as you indicated, at 34119 South Pacific Coast Highway. So here is the vicinity map to orient everyone. This is the site that currently contains the Makayaki Japanese as well as Thai. This is return to Dana Point, which I am speaking for many residents of Dana Point. Glad to see them return back to our community. Something has popped up here. And also the Subway relocation from the Row, the Row facility further south on Pacific Coast Highway and then the standalone Taco Bell site. Associated with this program, it will include 14 new signs throughout in totality. This is the first time that we've had a sign program here at this site and so we're very excited to see a consolidated and very specific vision of signage moving forward from this point, so staff is very happy about that. It's made up of primarily two components, the multi-tenant building, which is going to have about 250 square feet proposed, where 300 square feet would be allowed by the code, and then the standalone pad tenant, which will not exceed 235 square feet of signage. So you can see here, primarily, the proposed project includes wall-mounted signs, but there are a few additional types of signs that we'll go over here quickly. A majority of the signs we're going to have new to the site are going to be on that multi-tenant building that you see here, primarily be located above the each individual tenant space, not to exceed 75% of the frontage. Again, that's consistent with our sign ordinance. You can see there that they are proposing primarily black lettering unless there's some kind of registered trademark for each of the tenants. And then the two end tenants, which would be Thai This and Subway, would also be allowed to have a second sign located to Pacific Coast Highway and/or Subway to Del Prado accordingly. It's important to note that all of these signs are pin-mounted aluminum, individual lettered signs as well as halo illuminated, and that was something that we really pushed for. It's a very clean look and it's consistent with our design guidelines for signs. So we're very happy in terms of the direction in which signs, the wall signs will be going in the center. Similarly, we're going to see the signage overall for the site come into conformance with the sign ordinance that you can see there. On the top left corner is the existing internally illuminated monument sign that we have worked with the applicant, that within two years, should this program be approved, within two years of this approval, that they're going to go with a sign that will match, as you can see here, the image shown, which is consistent generally with the sign on Pacific Coast Highway, even though the sign on Pacific Coast Highway is going to get a bit freshened up with this approval. You can see there that'll be the individual tenant signs as well as centered, and this will lay out the types of logos, the color blue backgrounds. We'll have, again, consistent colors and consistent fonts out there, other than utilization of the corporate trademark registered, registered trademarks, excuse me, and then obviously will be exterior illuminated, as you can see there on the bottom, consistent with the code. Taco Bell, the standalone pad tenant, is going through the process of a whole tenant remodel and renovation of that site. It's been a number of years since they've done that, so they're still in the process of finalizing what those plans are going to look like. Generally, though, Taco Bell has provided this information to us regarding their vision of their signage for the future. Staff is supportive generally of the locations of the signs as well as the general size and the location of what's proposed, and staff will continue to push for a very similar pin-mounted and halo illuminated effects, similar to the primary building on site. Overall, all of the signs are consistent with the Dana Point zoning code, is consistent with the character of the site, and will bring the monument sign as stated into conformance with the Dana Point zoning code. The signs are very much scaled to their location, again, following that 75 percentage and pin-mounted and halo illumination. Again, that's the direction we're really trying to push, the majority of our signs that we're getting, especially in our town center where this is located. And staff does believe that all applicable findings can be made and staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the sign program permit, subject to the findings and conditions included in your draft resolution. And that concludes staff's presentation. We're available to address any questions. The Commissioners have?
The Commissioner have any questions for staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Sean, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
So I have a trick question for you, or it's not a trick question, but it's slightly complicated. If you go to page seven of the sign program, which is the inline tenant wall signs?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so going down to the bottom two, colors and font. And apologies for being really picky here, but I don't want to get lost. There's, I guess the question is, if I own a business and I have a copyrighted logo that's a different color than black, but it's not a registered trademark, then I can't use the logo, but I can use the color in my font?
Yes, and I, the way that it's written, it is meant to allow for still some flexibility to provide it, and that's why there is the logo spec on the, kind of the second portion there regarding size and scale and that each is a case-by-case basis, and that's what we even highlighted in our staff report, that it should, if it be not necessarily a registered trademark, but if they have a copyrighted logo, that there is potentially to be utilized. And it's also why we have the administrative sign permit that's always required to make sure whatever's proposed is consistent with the goals that we have here. So in the way staff has read it, that there is sufficient flexibility to allow for, to allow for that to occur still.
So I could use a logo, even if it's not trademarked?
Yes, that, we believe that the way this is written, it wasn't meant to prohibit that.
Okay, got it. And then the idea that the black, so this really leaves the, gives the landlord full authority to do whatever color he wants, basically?
We have tried to, again, go black because we feel that's a very simple color in trying to prevent a whole lot of different colors. And again, that's why we require an administrative sign permit. So as you can see here, the primary color is black, and so if there was something else that the landlord would want to go with, that's meant to be, that there would be some kind of explanation coming with that to the administrative sign permit. And I would say that staff has developed a really positive relationship with the ownership, so I don't think communication will be a problem.
Okay. That was it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean, for the two monument signs, it has two years within approval for them to change them out. Is there any penalty if they don't move forward with that?
So consistent with anyone that doesn't follow a condition of approval, because as noted, it is a condition of approval of the project, there's code enforcement or different actions that can be taken. God forbid some kind of situation where the city would have to go in and potentially do it, would probably be like the ultimate worst-case scenario, but we have a number of steps along the way before we even get to that point. So yes, there are mechanisms in place.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCann? I just, I went by the site and the picture on page 10, which shows blank sections, it's all, it's all completed now. The tenants are listed, so I guess the two years then to convert to the new program on both the streets?
So Pacific Coast Highway has already assigned very similar to the one that's going to be proposed, and so it needs to be cleaned up with a few of the, of the tenant names need to be to get the right center. I think one, I think the Thai This, the Royal Cleaners or Tic Tac Nails was off-centered, so there needed to be a slight cleanup there. But yes, we were definitely in favor of them cleaning up and filling in because there was some less than aesthetically pleasing situations, as you can see from this, regarding that internally illuminated. So while, yes, we want to see it turn over, we don't want to have a negative aesthetic out there, so we wanted them to get it cleaned up at the least while we wait that two-year period.
Any other questions? All right.
So are they not intending to do this and undertake this right away?
They are undertaking it right away, so as with any new signs that come forward, we'll have to meet this requirement in terms of the new types of sign program, in terms of, I know Subway is waiting to pull their permanent signage for the site to be, till this gets approved, as well as Thai This, because they're the most recent tenants to come in to that strip, so they're actually awaiting this approval, which they've indicated support for as well as the property owner. And so they'll be compliant with this, and then, as I said, for the component of this changeout of the sign on Del Prado, it'll be two years. That's the only component that will be, in essence, waiting that period, and then the sign on PCH, they're planning on updating it to match it.
Why do we need to wait two years? Or could the, could the property owner write a check and change it out next month?
Absolutely, they could. It was at the request of the property owner, and so we were just trying to work with them to allow them time to, they indicated it was a funding.
So they've requested for up to two years to make that change?
Yes, sir. They could come in tomorrow if they wanted to. Or after the.
So they've indicated they want to wait, basically?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it.
The other question, Sean, just as a matter of curiosity, there's a Subway just down the street. Is that the same operator or is this competition?
I would say, I believe that all of the Subways within the city of Dana Point are owner-run by a family here in Dana Point, and I'm pretty positive that all three locations are owned by the same family. Don't quote me about 100%, but I'm about 99-plus percent that the same family owns all three and operates all three, and our residents here in the city of Dana Point.
All right, since we have no public, we will not have a public hearing, so I will not open it or close it. Now, Commissioner, discussion before we call for a motion? All discussed? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the sign program permit, SPP 19-0002, for Dana Point Plaza located at 34119 South PCH.
I'll second that.
All right. Five oh, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Now, we have no old business. We have one item of new business. Our fearless leader is going to be departing, and so I want to know if this is the last meeting that we're going to have while you're still here?
Um, no.
No.
And then I did have a question in terms of scheduling our November meeting, which is scheduled for the 11th. It's Veterans Day. We close that day. Typically, we reschedule. We do have a number of projects in the pipeline, so impossible to avoid. We have one meeting in November, so suggestion would be to have a meeting on November 18, and then our notice schedule is 25th. But I'd be keen to see if you would be able to schedule a seat at Del Prado on November 18, probably see if that's a meeting. That would be great. I should pass along, and I will have one more opportunity to say goodbye at the next meeting, but Kelly Render, sorry, Economic Development Manager, will be filling in as interim, and especially that's going to be a real, I would be, our manager, Kelly, and I will be. Hey, Matt, did you consider Tuesday the 12th for the Commissioner? I'd have to double check. There was a reason why we went to the 18th, I can't remember off the top of my head, but if that's problematic, we could look back. Some of it is just the logistics of getting staff to put it ready for, considering 10 days ahead, we have a couple heavy items. November 5th, City Council, and also since all the meetings people have been at the first time along, people. Gotcha, okay. What's the, what's the item next meeting? Gloria Day, on the ground.
Is that our next meeting?
Yes.
And that's in the other, in the?
Community Center.
Yeah.
Okay. So staff reports, we've combined that with our new business, and I will now call for the adjournment, which will, the next meeting will be Monday, October 28th.
Mr. Chair?
At the Community Center? Oh, yes.
Will you quick comment here?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I actually had a couple real quick ones. First, I'll wait to say goodbye to you because you're going to be here for, it sounds like a painful meeting. So I give you credit for sticking around for that, because you probably could have took, taken off. How about Realto is going to really benefit from your, from you being there, and it needs help, so. So when I was out at the project in Capo, came across the northwest corner of Camino Capistrano and Caide de Sol in a, looked like sort of a DIY parking blockade along the street, the curb. I'll send you pictures so you can see it. Not clear what it is, maybe they have a permit to do that, but they were taking up quite a bit of parking space with strings and trashcans, so. And then secondarily, I used the Dana Point app today, and I got to say, I'm super impressed with how quick the response was. There was, somebody dumped a bunch of stuff on the corner. I took a picture, sent it in, and by noon, it was all gone, so great job whoever was managing that, that thing. That's it.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Hey Stacy? Okay.